All right, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of January 22nd, 2019. Call the order, please.
Hess.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noack.
Here.
And Walgura.
Here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a quick note for anybody that may not have noticed, Tom and Penny aren't here for the videography of this meeting. They had a short notice family event, so take good notes if you were planning on referring back to YouTube.
We're gonna have the audio.
Yes.
We will put the audio on YouTube. We had to do that one other time a while back.
Okay, so the audio alone will be on YouTube once we get back to it. Carrying on, any modifications to the agenda this evening?
Um, yes, I'd like to add, here in Humane Society, two Communications and Petitions, it would be 12A.
Second then.
Hess.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
And Walgura.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now approval of the minutes for open and close sessions, January 7th, 2019, and special session of January 14th, 2019. Any issues? Citizens preparing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns with council. This is the only time during tonight's council meeting that you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Just a brief update on road conditions. You know, I don't know if many council members have received calls on the conditions of the side streets, secondary roads. You know, we had that heavy, wet snow. We got the extremely cold temperatures. Salt and calcium chloride, calcium chloride will only work down to about 10 degrees is what I've been told. Beyond that, it may melt the top surface, but it's gonna refreeze real quickly. Just made this situation worse. So, we have been out putting salt and sand mix on the intersections, some of the curbs, to try to add that traction ability to the streets. You know, with this weather, we've got the snow coming, we're gonna be blading it off, but we're probably not gonna get all of that cut off the streets. You know, we were out today, we salted heavily and we got a lot off the downtowns of our primary streets, so. But just a few calls, we have been out there and doing what we feel is the best approach to try to make the streets as safe as possible.
Thank you, Rick. Sure.
Yep.
For me, I'm not used to doing this at all.
That's okay. Name and address first.
Oh, sorry, what?
Name and address first.
Name and address. Cody Brown. My address is 1029 Sable Street. I'm up here today to address what you guys are gonna be talking about with the recreational and medical marijuana bills. Basically, the only thing I wanna add into that is that if you do go forth and decide that you wanna have either medical facilities or recreational facilities or whatnot, then I suggest that it stays at least locally owned or at least taxed enough to where the people of this town reap all the benefits. You know, as far as when you open these type of things, you know, somebody that has money from another county or community that's, you know, allowed this for years and had time to build it up, can come in. And I think that if we're gonna do this for our community or anything like that, that it should go towards our schools, our roads, and people around the area who have been growing enthusiasts and medical practitioners in that area for years. And that's really all that I wanna say.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I would've been way more prepared, but I did not even know today was 22nd.
(laughing).
But, uh, thank you for hearing.
All right, thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
The consent agenda this evening.
Oh, we tried to invite Angie.
I just, I have a few quick questions regarding the Resolution 2019-1 authorizing the imposition of a 1% administration fee on all property taxes to be collected in the city of Alpena. I'm wondering, why is this necessary, number one? Number two, how will this be charged? Is that individually on top of your taxes? And how will this be spent? And is this going in the general fund? Or what is this necessary for?
I'll cover all that when we get to the item.
Okay.
I should answer all three of those.
Thank you.
Okay. If not, let me know and I'll try to.
Okay, thank you.
You have Angie's address?
No.
She's been up here before.
Yeah.
Angie Skiba.
I got it, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $512,551.76 be as a resolution acknowledging Friends of the Plaza Pool as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walgura.
Hi.
And Hess.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is an announcement. A meeting of the Alpena County Intergovernmental Council will take place on Thursday, January 31st, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Wilson Township Hall located at 3746 King Settlement Road. The presentation is the Headley Act. Am I correct?
Yes.
Next up, I have a proclamation for Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week. Whereas the Friends of the National, oh, I'm sorry, let me start again. Whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, and serve and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary, hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of film to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and bring cultural events to Alpena and surrounding communities to inspire a shared vision of conservation of ocean and Great Lakes environments through stunning, sometimes controversial, and always conversation-starting films. And whereas the Great Lakes region often considered the third coast is a vital part of the global waterways, thus making global issues our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival explores water issues through some of the most impressive ocean and Great Lakes films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussions with award-winning, nationally-recognized filmmakers. Now, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walgura, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 20th through the 27th, 2019, as Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week. And Stephanie and Andrew are here from the Sanctuary. Does Andrew cover?
Yes.
All right.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
Lips are moving at the mall, though.
Not taking a video, man.
I'm not giving you that close.
Is that Ben?
Okay.
(inaudible).
That's awesome. All right.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, no public hearings tonight. Next up is Report of Officers, Resolution 2019-01 authorizing the imposition of a 1% administration fee on all property taxes collected in the city of Alpena.
Okay. With the city's general fund stressed to meet ever-increasing demands placed upon its staff has had but two options, they can present the council during the budget process. These are status quo or reductions in spending. And I think one good example of that will come up later in this meeting, where we are proposing instead of buying a new ambulance for one that is needed at a cost of $180,000 to $200,000, of doing a remount of an existing box onto a new chassis at a cost of $80,000. So, looking at being able to scrimp as much as we can. Or the other option, of course, is revenue enhancement. For many years, every department within the city has practiced the art of flatlining and reducing costs while maintaining basic services and also maintaining and upgrading, when possible or absolutely necessary, the city's infrastructure, facilities, and equipment. Revenue enhancement can be a greater challenge due to limitations imposed by the state. When an opportunity exists, it is incumbent upon me to present it for council's consideration, such as the case of the property tax collection administration fee that is permitted under the General Property Tax Act of 1893 as amended. The Act allows a municipality to charge an administration fee up to 1% on all real and personal property taxes collected by it. In the case of the city, since we are both the assessing and collecting entity, we are entitled to retain the entire fee. The fee is intended to offset, and these are quote, this is a quote right out of the law, "to offset costs incurred by a collecting unit in assessing property values, in collecting the property tax levies, and in the review and appeal process." These costs would include the cost of the assessor, who is currently a contracted entity, Berg Assessing and Consulting, the clerk's office personnel, printing and postage, computer software, et cetera, basically anything related to the assessing and the collection of property taxes. That's both real and personal. These fees are restricted in their use and cannot be used for other city purposes outside of those directly related to the preparation and collection of property taxes. It is estimated that the fee for both summer and winter taxes would generate at least $90,000 to $95,000. We collect anywhere from $900,000 to $10,000, or $90,000 to $10,000,000 in property taxes each year. This is for all jurisdictions, not just the city. And that's what it's based on. This money would free up money in the general fund either by helping to preserve our fund balance or be available for other uses. Past councils have elected not to impose the fee, not wanting to add this cost to the taxpayer's bill. As budgets have continued to tighten, I believe we no longer have the luxury to forego this additional revenue source available to us. In my own case, the fee would add approximately, I said 23, it's actually closer to $21 to my final bill for both summer and winter taxes. Currently, all townships in the county except Sandbourne and Wilson assess the 1% fee. In order for the fee to be implemented, council must approve its implementation either by resolution or ordinance. Although imposing an additional fee is not anyone's first choice, including mine, I believe ongoing budget constraints, which are not going away anytime soon, compel us to seriously consider this option. The city manager, is my recommendation at the city, impose the 1% administration fee on all summer and winter property taxes collected by the city commencing with the summer 2019 tax bills. If council concurs with this recommendation, the attached resolution, number 2019-01, will need to be adopted. And just a couple other comments. Just to clarify things, the headline in the paper today stated that the city was considering a 1% tax hike. It is not a hike in the taxes. The amount of our millage rate is not changing. That is staying the same. What we're doing is applying a fee. A fee that you will see on basically any utility bill. It's the cost of preparing the bill, sending it out, and so forth. You'll see it on our water and sewer bills. If you go downstairs to pay a bill at the clerk's office and you wanna pay with a credit card, I believe that's a 3% fee that is added on to the cost. So, this is a 1% fee. It is whatever the tax bill is, so if it's $1,000 in the summer, it is added on to that. It'd be 1% of that $1,000, or in this case, it would be $10 is added on to the bill. So, the final bill would be $1,010. And as I stated before, the money is designated. We cannot use it on our park system. We can't use it for police and fire. It can only be used for costs related to assessing and collecting taxes. So, we would set up a separate fund. My guess is, based upon if you looked at all these costs, all the money would be spent each year because the costs do probably exceed that amount. But it does free up that money, which is now being taken from our general fund. It will no longer come from there. So, yeah, I look at, part of my job is to bring these things to council, bring them as much information as I can, let you discuss it, and make, obviously, then a, consider it, and then make a decision. My recommendation is that we do move forward with it. It's not something I'm sure any taxpayer wants, is to have something added on. In this case, administration fee, but times are not the same as they were 15 years ago, and we do need to do it. One other point just to bring up is, in the summer, we collect a lot of different taxes. School taxes, the SET, we collect our city tax. So, for us to cover those costs makes sense. We gotta do it for ourselves. Adding these others in is not really that much of an added cost. We're doing the work anyways. However, if we get to the winter tax that we're collecting now, we are required by law to pay for that, the cost of assessing, collecting, and distributing the money. And that money, none of that is city taxes. That all goes to the county. So, we're collecting county taxes and getting no reimbursement by the county. That is strictly our cost. And that's the way the law is. And so, I just look at the 1% as a way to at least compensate us for all the costs that we do have.
May I ask a question because I didn't get my question answered when I addressed it, so may I ask it?
Um, I'll tell you what, we don't have a whole lot of people here waiting. I'll entertain a question, but not a discussion or a debate of any kind.
Okay, my question was, I am opposed to adding taxes to my bill. If we had an assessor that was an employee, that was a current employee, would this still be necessary if we were not employing an outside assessor?
Okay, that wasn't one of the questions. But that's irrelevant. But it's a good question because it was asked actually by Steve when he interviewed me about it. Yes, it would still be the same. In fact, probably the cost, if we had our assessor with benefits and everything, maybe, is probably higher than what we're paying for the contracted consultant, when you add all that. So, it, the fact that we have a contracted consultant has no bearing on this whatsoever, whether it's that or an employee.
Thank you.
Yeah, which is a good point. I guess I'm questioned, I wouldn't say frequently, but occasionally about having a consultant do our assessing, doesn't cost more than it cost us to have Jeff Shay on as an employee.
Or anybody as an employee.
Might even be less.
Yeah, well, in his case, because of his length of service, it's probably less with a consultant. Now, a new employee, it may start out less, but as it works up, you know, it would grow as well. So, it really doesn't, that was not part of my recommendation or my looking at this. And just to emphasize, it's not adding a tax. It is in essence a fee. It's a collection fee, is what it is.
Just to clarify on that 3% credit card fee that we charge, we're not, we don't add on the 3% to earn any revenue off of that. It's what we get charged from the credit card processor. So, we're just passing that along.
Okay, thank you. I'll just open it up for discussion if anyone has any.
Anything else, eh, is that, you know, I think every one of us is sad here over the last several years. It's seemed the same thing. It's like staff doing things like we have later on tonight, just really finding any way they can to stretch the dollars that we have. And I know council, we've searched for dollars to add on another bag pickup, any of those type of services that we've had to cut. You know, obviously, I don't think anyone's in favor of additional fees or, you know, on anything, but we've gotten to the point right now where I think this is a necessary step. You know, that money is needed from our general fund that's currently covering expenses of this, you know, this fee is needed in other areas. I just think we're at that point. I mean, we've done everything we could possibly do. We get more mandates from the state and less funding. So, I think, you know, it may be the time that has to move forward. Those are just my thoughts.
I would love to ask, I have one comment to make. I would ask anybody who is opposed to the tax and concerned about it to do the calculation. Take 1% of what you spend. Do the calculation for yourself to see what it's going to be like. I think there are very few people who would suffer.
I did. It's $18. It was $18. To me, it was like I pay more than that billing fee for every utility I've ever had. I get a billing fee for my phone bill, you know? So, everything else has got a billing fee on it and, you know, and I couldn't find anything. I was gonna ask you two, Greg, is about the other municipalities across the state.
I, we were looking, we couldn't find any, say, how many actually impose the fee. So, I don't know that.
I know in our county, I was surprised that there were two that weren't because, you know, my assumption was that we were the last one that had not done that as of yet.
And really, the biggest payers on this, obviously, are gonna be the bigger taxpayers, which are gonna be your businesses, your industrial and your commercial businesses because they pay higher property taxes. They're gonna pay that 1% is, in terms of hard dollars, is gonna be more than it is for most homeowners.
Go ahead. I agree. I can tell you, I've got an ICH recycling, the county handles our fund that the taxpayers pay, and they assess a fee on that before they give it back to us. So, you're paying it everywhere, and everyone's trying to get what they can get so they can survive. I don't think this is a hardship, or will be a hardship on anyone, and I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, it equates to $10 on a $1,000 tax bill.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I would just, I don't know, agree with Mike and Greg, that there's only two things you can do. You can either operate more efficiently, or you can adjust your revenue source. And if I honestly didn't, I already think that we cut the costs when we can cut the costs already in every department, I wouldn't be in support of this. I do have one question, though, and you may not know, maybe it would be a question for Allen Berg, but when we do, when we do a poverty exemption, is this fee, does this exempt, is this fee exempt from a poverty exemption as well?
Yeah, because it's based on your actual taxes. So, if they have $0, then it's a fee.
Zero, they're not gonna pay a fee.
Yep.
It's a 1% of the tax bill.
I didn't think that through.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that's just for clarification. It's not based on your taxable value. It's not 1% of your taxable value. It's 1% of what your taxable.
The tax bill.
The taxes.
Yeah, the actual bill is. So, yeah, if you get a 100% exemption, you're not gonna be paying the fee either.
Okay.
Unless I can come up with some new math, 1% of nothing is something.
First, I appreciate everyone's comments. When I was first thinking about it, one thing I appreciate that is a city where a relatively strong financial position with their general fund balance, which isn't the case for a lot of government up there. And, you know, it is good to operate more efficiently. And in some ways, you think it would be nice to have the $100,000 out in the community, maybe than our bank. But I've also seen just in the year here, that some of our city needs, like the fire department or police, there are times where things that really should be essential are pushed off from year to year, and that's a concern. So, I, all those things are things I consider, I'm thinking about it. Like I said, I know there are needs. I think that sometimes are shuffled up for several years, and that is concerning, especially when it comes to safety and personnel and stuff like that. So, it's all things I consider.
Yeah, if there's any other discussion, I would usually encourage the YouTube viewers to attend our CIP meeting, which is open to the public, and I believe we'll be setting a date here shortly on that, if you're interested in where exactly all of our revenue goes, or the vast majority of it anyhow, as far as projects are concerned. There's no other discussion. I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move we approve Resolution 2019-01.
Second.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walgura.
Hi.
Hess.
Yes.
And Johnson. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Communications and Petitions. First up is the A, which is the Here in Humane Society Annual Report.
Mary Thurston Egan. I'm on the board of directors for the Here on Humane Society, and I stand here tonight in front of you with gratitude and pride. And we'll get to the pride after talking a little bit more about the gratitude. First, I do want to thank the city of Alpena for supporting Here on Humane Society monetarily and with things that mean so much to us, like hosting cats every Monday here at City Hall. It seems like a minor thing, but it helps get so many animals adopted. And it means the world to us that we have such a municipality that supports animal health and wellbeing in our community. Because it really is important, not just to the health of our community with the animals, but also for the human beings involved. And so, we thank you so much for that. And staff has been wonderful, dealing with everyone from city police down the line to members on the council who have served with the Here on Humane Society, who have volunteered at events. We just really want to make you know that we appreciate that, whatever your input was. So, that is the gratitude portion of my presentation. The pride part is that despite a very challenging year for the Here on Humane Society, we rose to that challenge and had a very, very successful year. It was a year of progress for HHS and a testament to what teamwork and hard work can accomplish. Intake adoption numbers and adoption numbers for the Here on Humane Society, this is important. The city of Alpena, 211 cats and 107 dogs. So, that's 318 animals just from the city of Alpena were taken in in 2018. It's important to note that the city of Alpena was given priority admission into the Here on Humane Society because of the service contract that HHS has with the city. This is especially pronounced during kitten season, when the city of Alpena kittens and cats jumped felines from other geographic areas on the HHS cat waiting list. Alpena Township contributed, I should say, 183 cats and 72 dogs. That was 255 animals. I would say there's about a 60/40 split between the city and the township within the county of Alpena. We had nine animals from other townships. The county of Alpena was responsible for 582 animals this year at the Here on Humane Society. 38 dogs were taken from outside the county, so a grand total of 620 animals went through the Here on Humane Society this year. That is a record by far. We did not simply warehouse animals, though, and that is what I'm most proud of. 241 dogs and 386 cats were adopted in 2018. That's 527 animals that went to new homes. 21 cats and two dogs were transferred to other shelters. That includes 21 cats that went to Ann Arbor. They have an incredible shelter there that quickly adopts out animals. So, when we started the year, we had animals and cats, especially at the Here on Humane Society, some of which would've been there for eight years. Eight years. That's in humane. That's not what the Here on Humane Society is about. So, we made a commitment that we were going to make sure that the animals in our care got what they deserved. And that is a home, a home, and that's important. Two dogs were taken to specialty rescue groups for specialty behavioral training and adoption. That's important to note. We are a no-kill shelter. That does not mean that euthanasia is never an option. It means it is only reserved for animals who are self- for animals who are suffering or who have such severe behavioral problems that they are a danger to the public. So that's very important. When animals have more minor behavioral problems, we find people who can solve that problem, and we did that this year. Success was not limited to animal care and rehoming, though. In 2017, the Here on Humane Society took in 237 animals. 237, this year 620. They spent $195,000, meaning each animal last year, 2017, I should say, cost about $823 to care for. The total income for HHS in 2017 was $202,000 and some change. Now, in 2018, the Here on Humane Society took in 621 animals. That was 222 dogs, 398 cats, and one ferret. I will tell you, the ferret was the most difficult of all. We did not want a ferret. We aren't licensed for that. We've meant considerably more, $252,000, meaning each animal, though, still cost half of what it cost in 2017, $406 to care for. So the total income for HHS in 2018 was $275,000. So we spent $57,000 more in 2017, but we raised $73,000 more than in 2017. With better fiscal responsibility and more aggressive adoption initiatives, HHS took in close to three times the numbers of animals as the year before and cut the cost of caring for those animals by half, by half. That's pretty impressive. And that is not patting my own back. It is patting the back of our staff and all the volunteers who really are what makes the Here on Humane Society work. We were able to cut the cost of caring for animals by waging an aggressive public relations campaign, reduce the number of days animals spent at the shelter waiting forever for forever homes. I want to thank the media of Elpina County for helping us to do that. The TV station, the newspaper, the radio stations in town, all were behind us in helping to promote the animals at the Here on Humane Society for the betterment of the animals and the community at large. Cats that had spent up to eight years of their lives living at the shelter after being deemed unadoptable were found loving new homes. HHS partnered with Petsmart to adopt cats through the Gaylord stores. 70 animals traveled to Gaylord this year and were adopted, all transported by volunteers or employees. Targeted pricing reductions were implemented during the peak of kitten season, when over 200 kittens flooded the shelter from early spring to late autumn. HHS entered 2018 with only three kittens after all of those. So we invested in the financial structural health of HHS by putting in a new furnace, which allowed HHS to do away with costly electric heaters, cutting our heating costs nearly in half. We invested in LED lighting, which cut energy costs even further. We repaired a leaking pump in the water well, that was fun, and purchasing a new tank, purchasing new commercial grade washers and dryers. It's important, our laundry room is a sanitation hub of the Here on Humane Society. It needs to be cleaned. The linens we put out into our shelter need to be cleaned to cut down on disease. So that was important. And we did research on how to reduce stress for cats at the shelter, which is a big factor in immune health. This year, the Here on Humane Society spent over $30,000 in veterinary costs and medical expenses. We did not scrimp on the care for our animals to cut animal care costs. That is so important for people to understand. And we really researched how to reduce the incidence of infection in our shelter. So we got feel-away plugins that release hormones into the air that help to calm cats. We use more vertical space. If you go on our Facebook page, you'll see pictures of shelving that we put all around cat colonies so cats could be stimulated physically and mentally and have places to climb. We put music in the shelter. You will walk in and see echo dots everywhere and hear different music that calms the animals and creates a more pleasant environment for the people who visit. We kennel cats at night now and only feed in those kennels. That way, we can make sure that each individual cat is eating what it should and that their waste is what it should be. It's not a pleasant job, but it's one we have to do. And it's worth it. We price shop for goods and services, cutting costs wherever possible. Prime example, price shopping for propane, cutting our bill from $2.90 per gallon to $1.59 a gallon. We won a $5,000 grant from the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan to assemble the equipment to upgrade our veterinary care room at the shelter to make it safer for the animals and employees alike. And we put our money where our mouth is and transferred $40,000 to the Here on Humane Society New Building Fund as a community foundation for Northeast Michigan to begin a capital campaign to build a new permanent home for the Here on Humane Society. So having proven its improved fiscal, ethical, and humane responsibility in action over the past year, the Here on Humane Society respectfully asked for an increase of funding for its contract with the city of Elpina. If HHS were to build the city, the $406 that it cost us to care for each of the 318 animals we took in from the city of Elpina in 2018, the bill would be over $129,000. It's important to note that the $406 per animal includes testing for common infectious diseases, flea and tick treatments and preventatives, heartworm preventatives, all standard vaccinations, socialization, care and feeding, and spay-neuter services, all of which benefit public health for animals and humans alike. The Here on Humane Society requests an increase in funding by the city of Elpina to $20,000. For this price, the city is still only covering $63 of the $406 that cost us per animal in 2018, and that $63 barely pays for the first round of testing and vaccines each animal receives. It does not cover spaying your services, veterinary visits and care, the cost to employ professional animal care technicians who mainly care for the homeless companion animal residents of Elpina, the society's insurance, maintenance, or utility costs. 527 animals were released back into our community by being adopted from the Here on Humane Society. Those animals were either surgically altered or came with a free voucher to be spayed or neutered. They were tested, vaccinated, and screened and socialized. A healthier pet population in the city of Elpina makes a healthier human population as well. So, funding of $20,000, we think is a good bargain for the city of Elpina and will be put to responsible use by the Here on Humane Society. Again, thank you so much for your support in 2017. We deeply appreciate it, and thank you for the opportunity to come and address you tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, confidence.
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, medical and recreational marijuana facilities update and discussion. Adam Paul?
Good evening. Adam Paul, Land District. Get ready to do it. On December 19th, the medical, or the marijuana facilities, you can change your name slightly because we're doing medical and recreation, that to discuss recent changes in regards to both medical and recreational marijuana laws. The committee looked at the laws and their potential impacts in the city of Elpina. Medical marijuana has been in the city of Elpina and the rest of the state of Michigan since 2008. Recreational marijuana became decriminalized in December of 2018. The city cannot prevent the use or the growing of limited amounts of marijuana in somebody's home. Other potential impacts, other potential issues that deal with the presence of marijuana, such as the difficulty of roadside testing for drivers under the influence of marijuana, the use of marijuana as a needed medicine, and the additional exposure and normalization of marijuana to the youth were discussed, but the main focus of the committee were the laws themselves and the impact on the city of Elpina. As the city is given the option to either opt in for medical marijuana facilities or to opt out of recreational facilities. As far as medical marijuana facilities, the committee discussed the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, we'll call it MMFLA, and noted that commercial facilities adhering to this act have been operating in certain parts of the state since late October, and that in early December, permanent rules regarding medical marijuana facilities were finally established. These rules included regulations allowing for home delivery of medical marijuana, which was the most significant change to the temporary rule system that the state had been operating under. The committee also discussed that some of the medical marijuana facilities were in operation, but there were far more of these facilities in operation that did not meet licensing requirements, but the courts ruled they could continue operation because of a very slow rollout of the medical marijuana program. The committee discussed that there did not seem to be many immediate issues associated with the medical facilities, but it was tough to observe their operations due to the overwhelming majority of these facilities in operation were not compliant with the state medical marijuana facility law. These nonlicensed facilities were ordered shut down by December 31st of 2018. As of January, the only licensed facilities can legally operate in Michigan. That did shift slightly fairly recently. The facilities are operating, but they are able to buy their medical marijuana from licensed caregivers, which without testing it. So that was because the supply was not there. As far as recreational marijuana facilities, the committee discussed the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MRTMA, more acronyms, and noted that the law was a voter-initiated law and that there are a number of areas of this law that need to be clarified by the state or would likely lead to lawsuits as the law, as the law in many places has it written very broadly. The committee discussed the timeline and the fact the state would more than likely not start processing recreational facility license until December of 2019, but noted the new governor could expedite that process, and it would be wise for the city to be ready to take action while before that time. The committee discussed that some of the issues present in the law are as follows. One, zoning issues. Unlike medical marijuana law, which specifically allows the regulation of zoning, there does not appear to be clear language that allows a community to set zoning regulations for recreational facilities. The law does say no facility should be allowed in exclusively residential zoning districts, but most communities in this state, including Elpina, allow many uses in residential districts that are not residential in nature, including schools, churches, and some small-scale retail uses. Number two, a community may not set regulations that are unreasonably impractical, and that's their term, according to the law. Vague phrases like this are usually determined eventually by the courts. Number three, a community may limit the number of facilities, but does not appear to allow the community to restrict which types of facilities. That's up to some debate, but as written, it's tough to interpret. It also requires a competitive process, and again, that's their term, to determine which applicants are awarded facilities. Generally, most communities avoid competitive processes as they attract litigation from those applicants who are not selected. Most communities have utilized a lottery system or a first-come, first-served process for medical marijuana, but these communities would be required to generate a competitive process for the recreational facilities. And to this gentleman's comments about wanting to keep it local, some of those competitive processes have a tendency to sway towards the larger marijuana operations. So there, in many ways, they would make it more difficult to have local, if it is competitive process, to have some of the local running the operation because somebody else may have a competitive advantage in the fact that, like you said, they've been operating already. So that's a consideration. Number four, the law allows reasonable restrictions on signage of medical marijuana facilities. This is in direct conflict with Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, which Supreme Court case that stated content to face sign regulation was not allowed. Any regulations to this effect would almost certainly be struck down in court. Number five, whatever decision the city makes, citizens of the city can petition to initiate an ordinance with 5% of the total number that voted in the latest gubernatorial election to completely prohibit or provide for a number, for the number of marijuana establishments within a municipality. While many people believe that a citizen petition could force the city to opt in and allow recreational marijuana facilities, the language of the law does not appear to read as such, and that will need to be clarified by the courts. It is hoped that these issues can be fixed prior to any licenses being issued by the state, though either the state legislator or through the state licensing or regulatory affairs division, LARA. However, until these issues are addressed, the committee has serious concerns with the ability to regulate these recreational facilities. I'm going to skip a couple here. As far as revenue, I would note that the committee, throughout the beginning of this process, the committee has noted that any potential revenue would appear to be marginal. It would not appear, in the committee's analysis, to be a significant determining factor for whether these facilities are allowed. So as far as potential options, if the council chooses not to allow medical marijuana facilities, either at this time or permanently, no action would need to be taken as the MMFLA, the medical, requires a unit of government to take action in order to opt in and allow medical facilities. If the council chooses not to allow recreational facilities, either at this time or permanently, an ordinance would need to be approved opting out of recreational facilities, as the law requires that a unit of government to actively opt out of commercial marijuana facilities. Council could include language to review the ordinance at a certain time if they desire, or could choose to opt, or could choose to opt in at a later date at any time. If council chooses to allow, if council chooses to allow marijuana facilities, the committee feels the current recreational law as written has too many flaws and could put the city at risk. The Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act would be a better option at this time if council chooses to allow marijuana facilities. The committee would also note that despite the fact the city can't opt in and out of allowing both medical and recreational facilities at any time, once a facility is legally operating, it would not be possible for the city to require a facility to cease operations unless the state revokes their license, even if the city chose to opt out later. So, what are other cities doing? I won't go through the entire list, but I just highlighted a couple of examples. With medical marijuana, many units of government have not taken action and effectively opted out, which is what we have done so far. A few local units of government, such as Traverse City, have opted in for medical facilities, but have opted out for recreational facilities for the time being. And for instance, Traverse City cited lack of rules and plan to revisit that decision at a later date. Gaylord, another interesting case, once had facilities, but as of now, has opted out of both medical and recreational facilities. Very few communities have opted in for recreational or adopted any ordinance or regulations as the rules have yet to be written by the state in this area. One other, one other thing that Greg and I have talked about, at least at staff level, some of the wording in the law regarding public consumption, if I'm reading the law, if my notes are correct, the law said the act does not authorize public consumption. However, it does not specifically prohibit public consumption under the recreational marijuana law. I believe the medical law was more specific in that regards. So it would potentially be in the best interest of the city to clarify that because as the law right now, it is gray under the recreational laws. So at least staff, and this was not discussed by the committee because this was called later, would encourage passing an ordinance to prohibit the public consumption of medical and recreational marijuana.
That would necessitate defining what a public area is, which we, of course, would have the city attorney draft that ordinance, but we would strongly recommend that is otherwise right now under the law, which is in place. If somebody was walking down the sidewalk and smoking marijuana, I would assume our officers would probably issue a ticket for that, saying you can't do it in a public place. The way it's written, it's one of those gray areas again. They didn't just say prohibit. They used a law that does not authorize. Now, what's that mean? They're not authorizing you to do it, but they're not telling you you can't. So the recommendation, when I informed council that we were joining a consortium of communities to pay, we were paying a firm to, you know, provide some advice on things. One of their things, actions they suggested taking is that you go ahead, if you do not want the use in public spaces, that you enact an ordinance prohibiting it specifically in defining what those spaces are. So at least my recommendation, the city manager would be that council direct the city attorney to do that, bring it back, then you can look at it and decide whether it's what you want or not. But it's really kind of separate from the issue of facilities because this is something that can be happening right now, or at least be a gray area because you are allowed to possess it. It's just a question of where you use it.
Have you, have you, I mean, I don't, I'm assuming that you two discussed this.
Well, not this. Well, not this last thing, this was more, uh, as we began looking at, reviewing again, and we saw these, these things, which MML pointed out, like the thing about the, the use in public spaces, is that, you know, I, um, so I haven't had a chance to actually sit down and talk with Bill about it.
I guess I would just assume you formed an opinion on that before we, before we write an ordinance to it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have an ordinance that outlaws a law, doesn't make sense to me, so if you wouldn't.
I know it's, uh, as part of the, uh, what's called CDan, the Criminal Defense Attorneys of Michigan, that, that issue has been bouncing around on the listserv about what our community's doing and what people think they should be able to do, and, you know, and it's, it goes all different directions. Some people think that if it's legal, you should be able to walk down the street and smoke marijuana because it's legal to possess, and if it's legal to possess, it's legal to use. It doesn't make sense to say you could possess it and you can use it. Other people take the position that, you know, cities, municipalities have the right to, uh, regulate certain things. We regulate alcohol in a certain way, we don't let people walk down the street with alcohol, we don't let them walk out of the bar with alcohol, so there, there's certainly a difference of opinion on, on how it should be done. But I think one of the suggestions from, uh, I can't remember which firm, it was at Barnum?
Second, got it here. Dixon Wright.
Dixon Wright, yeah. One of their suggestions was that, that, you know, if, if the city, if a city wants to, uh, regulate where it's used, then that it's certainly got the right to do that. I think Adam's correct, that the law as written is vague in some areas. And, uh, similar to the Medical Marijuana Act, that would've got passed, it took, uh, it took several court cases and years' worth of time to figure out, you know, what is an enclosed locked facility, uh, what is usable marijuana? Does twelve plants mean twelve plants that are hanging or twelve plants that are growing? You know, this is two-point-five ounces includes seeds, I mean, so there's, unfortunately, where there are attorneys, people will challenge what it means, so I'll, I'm sure there'll be some challenges to the recreational marijuana language as well as time goes by. And the rules aren't gonna be promulgated until probably December.
Depends on how much pressure Lara.
I think, because they've done it once, I think it's gonna be quicker than that. I think maybe mid-year or fall.
So that, you know, that'll give some guidance, but until that happens, everybody's kind of just talking about, well, can you do this? Can you do that? And nobody knows with certainty at this point.
And a perfect example is just in the last week, came up on my manager's listserv, because the community said, "We're planning on doing recreational, but we're only going to allow one growth center." And I don't know what size it was, because there's two sizes. Does anybody have any, uh, ordinances in that where they did that limited to it? Well, it wasn't a big response back and forth, but when you came down, or these were from, uh, city managers saying what their city attorney said, and they went from, "Oh, no, you can't do that. If you allow, you, you either opt out or you have to allow everything." To those that, "Oh, no, you can do this, just like medical marijuana." So even city attorneys are on, on both sides of the fence here, and we don't have a clear picture there as well, in terms of what you can and cannot do. I made the point, I think, to all of you from my perspective is, it doesn't matter what my personal feelings are on this issue. Though you all know them, because I've told you, and, and I've let you know upfront, but it's irrelevant. The only thing that I look at is, whatever we do, we should not put the city at risk. And that's the key for me. So, if things are, as the recreational is, very vague, very, uh, convoluted, the, the whole issue of whether you can, where, where they're coming from on the law, if you read one part of the law on can you say no to this use and yes to that, it, it's kind of saying, no, you gotta, you either opt out or you have to allow them all, but then you read later when it talks about getting the tax revenue, we're getting a share of that, it says only for those communities who allow either a retail business or a microbusiness. Well, that by its very statement is, gives, implies to me that there's the option of whether you allow it or not. Which means you could say no to a retail business, but yes to a growth center like the one community is looking to do. And that's part of the confusion. And, which is why my feeling is, we wait, it's like Traverse City, it doesn't mean you, it's forever. It's just like we were trying to do with medical marijuana, know what the rules are. And I think Lara will clear up a lot of the confusion, but I don't think they're gonna clear up all of it. I think some of it's gonna be the courts, just like it was for medical marijuana. Some of those things got clarified only when somebody was sued. I just don't think it's in the city's best interest to be one of those involved in lawsuits. So that's my, my thoughts on it.
Large issue, and there's a lot of different things, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that maybe I didn't completely cover in this and believe I can go on, and try to limit it to, to, believe it or not.
It was a, it was a good report, and it even referred back to your, um, October report, which I actually started reading and realized that I had read that before. And then I read the, um, everything that the Michigan Municipal League had, that you had shared, and then I read the law for a while, and, um, quite frankly, if it confuses lawyers, I guess it should confuse me, which it did. You can pick out, um, you can pick out things that are, um, that, uh, that don't, that don't.
Match out one statement to another.
Yeah, there's a, there's a word for that, it's failing me right now, but, uh, it contradicts itself, in my opinion, under some things. So I don't, um, I don't know, I, I just, I, I would like to clarify the, the, um, the public spaces as soon as possible, just so we, just so we know, just so we know where we are. I guess I had assumed since it was, since the day it was passed, that it, that you wouldn't be able to, um, to use it on the street, but...
In medical, was very clear about whether you could use in public spaces, but now with the recreational, they're two different laws covering two different topics, so, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, but you make a good point, because they did, um, Lara did clarify the, the medical marijuana regulations extremely, uh, since the beginning. I pretty much understand them, I would assume completely. So I'm actually only hoping that, uh, that the same thing will happen with recreational, so we'll all understand exactly what it entails. I didn't see where it, where it significantly discussed grows provisional centers, testing, transportation.
Like the medical business, a micro business.
Like the medical one does, so, um, I'm assuming that they'll straighten all of that out. I don't know where the council, in, as a whole, wants to go with it. Personally, I would, I would agree with, um, with staff and, uh, as Traverse City has to, to, to opt out in the hopes that Lara gets this all straightened out very quickly. And, uh, as far as medical marijuana goes, um, I would entertain some discussion as well about whether we, we're, we're very clear on, on what those rules and laws are. We should probably decide at some point, um, where the city's gonna go with that.
In my opinion, the, the phrase that sums it all up for me, or especially for medical marijuana, is the last few words of this, our explanation, which is, "The rules have yet to be written." How can we manage, it's like herding cats. We can't manage something you don't understand or know and has no definition. How can we charge law enforcement, attorneys, um, even individuals with use, uh, sales, anything, if we don't know what the rules are? And I think it would be foolhardy for any of us to think it'd be like how you jump in and see what happens. It'd be terrible misuse of our community and our citizens. Frankly, I, I can't imagine that's something we would ever want to do. I, I don't think that would help.
For recreational at this point, because the rules aren't established, I think whatever they did and what we did with medical and saying, let's wait and see, just so there's established rules, so we know what we're working with. But with the option of looking at it again, once there are established rules, because of, you know, because once you know what those rules are, then you can see if it makes sense or not. But in the case of medical, they are well-established now, um, they're pretty much in place, there's a process. It still comes like a very slow process for licenses, but it's out there. Delete myself a Cinnar State, um, there, I believe, and I think a lot of people do, there's a medicinal, medicinal value in, uh, medical marijuana. The citizens of our city voted for it, um, for, for, you know, allowing it. It is already available in other ways, so my thought of, of the players that entertaining, moving forward with medical facility is something I think we should consider, and possibly revisit. Recreational, as soon as our, our established guidelines that we can look at and know what we're looking at, these are my thoughts. Just one other thing, I, so while I'm talking, um, there isn't not a lot of revenue associated, especially with medical, and somewhat, none, yeah, some with recreational we forward, but there are other forms of revenue that very likely would come to our community. There are now other places in our whole region that people can access this medicine, what you know as medicinal at this point. There are gonna be people that come here to access something that they use as part of their life and it helps them. It's gonna bring people to the area, it could bring tourists to the area, which we already are growing as a tourist avenue, but I think, say, in Colorado, for example, or some other states, it's not, you know, there's lots of people out in the world that are interested in this, and of all, there are various people, you know, I don't wanna judge anyone wants to do it or not, but it, there are other revenue sources, I think, that would affect our community. There'd be property taxes on businesses, there'd be jobs, so I think if you look at the whole impact, I mean, it's something you have to consider.
And just to clarify, the, any revenue off of medical marijuana has gone, there is zero. Go ahead, Michael.
There is still filing fee to cover the initial.
Oh, well, filing fee, uh, tax, right, I should. Thank you.
And my own personal thing in, in having a lot of conversation with other communities, both for, uh, medical and for recreational, including other state municipalities, and I've already had this involved. I'm not in favor of either. A lot of the people that are, have the medical marijuana cards right now have sources, but the facilities themselves really do raise a lot of issues because it is still a, not a federal legalized drug, it's a cash business, and the issues that that business alone brings in other communities has really raised a lot of issues that we don't even know what we're dealing with as of yet because of that, you know, the nature of that business. You know, I would probably, uh, disagree that the impact on the community would be a positive impact. I think that, um, the strains within the marijuana themselves are not controlled. It is not a drug as if, as we're giving, uh, you know, something that's prescribed by a pharmacy and stuff like that, there's different strains that can be due. There is a lot of municipal, municipal, whatever, medical advantages of this. I'm married to a very wonderful nurse who explained everything to those, and I agree with that aspect of it. The facilities themselves, um, you know, the best thing that can happen is that it's, you know, issued by a doctor and prescribed by a pharmacy, it's a legal, you know, a medical necessity drug at the federal level. All of you who know me have always said I've never, I've never been in favor of any law that locally that's in congru with any state law, and I'm not in favor of any, any law that's in congru with the federal law. But I think, to clarify what I've heard from a lot of people that voted, they, they did vote for this to decriminalize it and not make it an issue. Somebody's twenty-one years or older and chooses to grow this and use this drug in their own, uh, personal, private area, that's what they did, but they did not, uh, again, vote for, uh, you know, a facility that would distribute this to come into the community. If people are interested in putting that on the ballot and doing it, they have that right to do that. As a, you know, as a government entity, I think it is in our best interest right now to opt out.
Can you, and I don't, uh, just for discussion's sake, when you have spoken to other communities, and you mentioned that there are issues with, with, uh, I'll call them provisioning centers, because now I'm used to calling them provisioning centers, I assume that that's what you're talking about. What are the, what are, specifically are the issues?
Uh, some of the issues were, uh, more break-ins, uh, crime-related around the facilities. It is a cash, cash business, there was outside dealing that was going on, that was, you know, illegal in itself, but it was just those type of issues. They're not allowed to bank, they're not allowed to do any depositing or anything like that at all, so they saw that as an issue. Some of the, uh, the facts that were given to me were like, you know, marijuana-related, uh, crashes in Colorado were up one-hundred-and-fifty-three percent, you know, and that wasn't with a diminished alcohol, you know, uh, related incidents and stuff like that, so, I mean, this is, this is a choice. This is, this is, if you choose to do this and choose to use this in the privacy of your own home, it's, it's fine, but I don't think it's probably something that, having a provisioning center, in my opinion, and based on those who approach me, is not in the best interest of the community. So, it was a very, very close vote, and, and I just said in the community, it's, yeah, I think if anything here in, on the council, it would be a close vote, so, I believe. Like every, every aspect of our community has to have a voice.
One of the interesting points, which I had heard of, but then I, an article was sent out, actually by Ann Gentry, in Colorado, you know, it's looked at that, you know, here's where recreational marijuana is almost like cocaine or whatever, it's a prime thing. Yet out of all the communities, only twenty-five percent of the communities in Colorado actually allow facilities within them. So it's not like it's widespread, uh, everywhere that they're doing this, it's, uh, only twenty-five percent. I was amazed, I didn't know that, so, you know, there was the article and I, and I looked at it. So, yeah, it's allowed, and, and we realize it's there, and people can do it, and we can't prohibit that within the home or what, wherever, and, and utilizing it on private property. It's the other aspects that is the tough call for you to make. The facilities and, and that, that become more of the issue that you have to decide.
This is tough. I agree that, um, recreational marijuana, we have to wait and see if we can move forward with that. But do agree that if you, if you have a medical marijuana license, there are places to get, to get the product. For me, this is the medical one, is, this is what I would like to see, is just wait, see what happens, what happens with this. We don't have to, yeah, we don't have to jump in. Wait and see approach, but we can always revisit this, we can always revisit it. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask you to clarify what you mean, what, what you're waiting for.
Well, for other communities to do this, and what issues do they have? Are, is there more crime? Do, do they, I know that, you know, it's a cash-based business, what do, what do they do with that? I mean, what do you do with it? They're not allowed in the DDA, and I know the DDA is, um, doing a survey with, uh, with, yeah, maybe it's Friday, so we don't have that information, but, um, I just think there's so many unanswered questions that, in my mind, so many unanswered questions. I think the more, the, the more that people do these facilities and we see the issues, good, bad, and ugly, we can decide. That's kind of, that's kind of what, I, I'm kind of a, let's wait and see what happens. Not opposed to any of this, people have a right to do this, I, and okay. I just wanna make sure it's right for us, if we decided to move forward.
I, and I respect everything and understand everything that everyone had to say. Certainly with recreational, it sounds like we're all on the same page that we're just, we just, we have to wait till the state clarifies this. I agree with Greg. It's, sometimes you just want to say, you know, well, we don't have to wait for everybody else. Let's be the one and, and we'll take on the burden of straightening this out. But it couldn't, it could cost the city an extensive amount of money to be in litigation as we know how much litigation costs. As far as recreational goes or as far as medical goes, I guess I'm, I'm. I'm more, I could, I could counter everything. I'm a debater, I guess, to a certain extent. And I really want to know, you know, what, I really wanted to know what these issues were, but I guess I could counter that with, well, I should go down and close the. Or not allow a jewelry store because people want jewelry so they're going to break in. Break, break-ins aren't, aren't my issue. If you're running a store and you've got break-ins because people want what you got, then I guess you have to be a little bit more secure with, with that, I guess. So that's, so something like that really isn't going to sway my opinion of recreational or of medical. As far as, as far as the statement goes that people that, that, that need medical marijuana are getting it. I have absolutely no idea where they're getting it. I, I don't have a card nor do I have any close friends that have cards that I've asked them, where are you getting it? It's, so just, and, and let's just say that they are. Are they getting it from a licensed facility? Are they getting it from what the state has deemed by law safe? Is it tested? Is it, does it fall under in, in the specific criteria for percentages of HTC levels? THC levels, thank you. You know, these things that are by the law, so, so if we're, if, yes, sir.
You want me to tell you where they get it? I know lots of people do it.
No, not particularly. I was just stating that I don't. So, so it's, so it's, it's. Medical marijuana is legalized. They have laws that we waited for to get put in place. And I guess maybe we gave people the impression that we were waiting for these laws to get in place so we could, so we could allow those facilities to flourish in the city of Alpena. But now maybe we haven't. I, I would almost feel like we've, we've hesitated and said we were going to wait until these laws got put into place. And that's really not what we were waiting for because if the majority, if the majority of us were waiting for these rules and they're in place, we would be passing some ordinances right now. I was waiting for them to be put in place so we could, so we could use those laws to formulate our own. I've seen marijuana facilities. They're, just the ones I've seen are just as nice as our jewelry store, since I already brought up a jewelry store. So, so they're not, they didn't disgust me. They didn't, they, I didn't see a lot of. People of any kind hanging around them like the fear is, I guess. Maybe I was just in the right part of town. But, so, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of determining through, through our resources. What we may or may not allow as far as medical. I am waiting for the DDA. I was, if you saw in the, I think the report in the paper said that the city council asked them their opinion. I don't know if any of you did, but I did. I did in an economic development committee meeting with the DDA. I asked them what their opinion was or whether they would even want to give an opinion. And so they put out the survey. I'm interested in what it says. And what they think of having facilities downtown, provisioning centers or testing facilities or anything else. So, and I asked our committee, you know, at one point last year. To, to, to come up with and determine what, what the issues are because for provisioning center, obviously it's going to be like a store. But a processing facility, I think we need to know what's the byproduct. Where does it go? Does it, does it have an odor? Are there, and there are regulations, I believe, for odors in a processing facility. But, but if we're going to have a, have a real discussion as far as, you know, where we're going to zone to allow any of these things to take place. Especially a processing center, I would want to know what, what that, what that entails. Greg has said before that, you know, we really don't have the room for something like that, but.
Processing, the grow, but.
A grow.
Depending upon how it's done, that space becomes an issue. We don't have like a lot of communities, large vacant buildings. You know, that can be converted easily. So, so it may necessitate new construction.
And there is.
Some could look at it as a positive.
And, and, you know, over in our commercial area. I don't know what we call it over off of, by Alro in that area. There's some property there, the US 23 North. I've been trying to get rid of it for a long time. When you start looking at areas like that and you say, okay, well, just allow somebody to put up a processing center. Allow somebody to put up a grow there. There's what? Almost 90 acres just sitting there. So, you know, when you, when people say, well, I don't, we shouldn't be concerned with the revenue. Yeah, we probably should be concerned with the revenue and the vast majority of, of, and I know it's just social media, so it's very limited amount of people that see it, right? But the vast majority of comments on social media, when the township of, of Alpena opted out and those who thought that we already did. The vast majority of comments are there's money in your face right there and you're not taking it. Because you got to consider some of these won't affect anyone, won't change really. What's going on in the city right now because they're all getting it from somewhere already. Might be your neighbor's, might be your neighbor's place. You don't, you may, you, you may not even know it. So you're kind of trying to get this whole talking a lot here, but we've got time. That are we really going to notice that anything changed if we pass some of these, give some of these people some abilities to, to make a wage?
So maybe what we should do is direct staff to tell us where it fits, where it doesn't fit, those sorts of things so that we even know if it fits.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And, and that kind of coincides with assuming that Friday, the, the DDA gives us an opinion of what our local merchants think. It'll, it'll have a bearing on, on me. I, I, and I told him at the meeting, you know, that I would, that I would consider their thoughts. But I would, I would at least, I want to, personally, I want to start moving forward with allowing some source of medical marijuana facilities in the city.
Just for clarification, when I refer to about revenues, that was only the taxable revenue that had nothing to do with the economic development aspect that Amber spoke up, so certainly keep that in mind. That being said, the planning commission has begun looking at locations, knowing that you guys were going to have this conversation today. So they started reviewing like zoning districts at their last meeting. This beginning the preliminary conversations, if it, you know, what, what some of the thoughts that were expressed by the planning commission are obviously. Grow, growers can only be by medical marijuana law, which is a much better written law located in an industrial district or ag district. We don't have ag. So the growers would be in the industrial district. So, so pretty much there are a few intermittent throughout the residential neighborhoods, but mainly the north side by, you know. All the gray area in that map right there. So.
Yeah, if you were looking at what you mentioned, the 23 North property, that would have to be rezoned to allow.
To ag.
Grow or not ag, we do it to industrial problem.
That being said, there are uses that you will probably have very little impact or be not be able to be noticed easily. Your secure transporters, your testing facilities, your processors, and most processors actually can be very small in nature generally. Those three are probably going to be on the smaller side. What you are, what you're really talking about are the grow operations, provisioning centers and maybe the processors. A lot of them like trying to co-locate all three of those things, aspects. If they co-locate, they're going to be in the I district. Because the growers are not allowed in, in, under medical marijuana anywhere but the industrial districts. And if they locate individually, like provisioning centers could be potentially anywhere we want to put them, commercial districts, that kind of thing. Traverse City, for instance, said, we're not putting the DDA because their DDA didn't want it. However, they said, we'll allow it anywhere, allow a provisioning center anywhere where we allow pharmacy. Obviously, it can't be called through a thousand feet from a school because that's another language that's in there, although under the recreational we can reduce that. So there are areas that, you know, we could look at protected uses as some people say, you know, we don't want to buy churches or that kind of thing. I did talk to the planning commission about not putting too many restrictions on protected uses. Simply because as soon as you start drawing a lot of circles around the city, it gets a lot more complicated. And it's more likely to be struck down if we draw, if we fill the city with circles so that they can't be located in. So the planning commission is looking at it and if it is a direction of council, we can have a more serious conversation at the planning commission level. Looking at specifically medical marijuana because that looks like where you are leaning at the moment if a facility is going to come to pass. But they have started the conversation, so I can give you now briefly, briefly went over what the conversation has been. And I can show you, you know, I've provided some maps previously and I can show you more next time if you prefer.
And then there would be other ordinances besides zoning that we'd need to do. Which we work with Bill on to make sure that we basically have our ducks in a row. What forms do we have to create? What we don't want to do is. Opt in and we're not ready to do it. So you make sure you have the zoning in place, at least if we're going to do it passed by the planning commission, now it can go to council. That we have whatever other ordinances prepared for you to review and either adopt or modify whatever you want. And all the forms, anything else, all those ancillary things that we need so that we get all that approved. Then you say, we vote to opt in because then we're ready to go. Don't want to opt in and then not be ready because now you're creating a whole can of worms for everybody. Those who want to command, the city and so forth. So it's, it's a timing process in terms of how you do it. If you go that way. And even if we work all this through, it doesn't mean in the end you approve it. You could still say, nope, we're not going to do it and that's fine. It's not wasted because maybe six months, a year, two years down the road, you change, you or another council changes mind. Well, we've done a lot of the homework and we're, so it's not wasted effort. I would still.
A little bit of work. So if I'm understanding what we need to direct staff or first, we would like to direct them to, or direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance. Preventing public use of marijuana or use of marijuana in public places. We want them to look into that. Is that correct?
That's, that was one.
That's one part of it. Okay, so I'm going to make that a motion. And then we can at least help in that particular one.
Just, just so it's clear, do you want an opinion on whether I think we can restrict it in public spaces or?
But if you agree that it, you can, if you come up with that, then I say, go ahead and let's work on the ordinance. If you say, no, we can't, then that's all you say and we don't present anything. If you say we can, we can present it to you and you can decide whether it's what you want to do.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just wanted to be clear. So, so within probably the next couple of meetings, you would know. I just didn't want to draft an ordinance that says you can't do something that you can't do. Right, yeah. I'd love you guys to vote. Well, that could happen. I love plastic bags.
So your motion is if it can be done.
If it can be done, I would direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance.
To draft the ordinance.
Walgra?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, should we make a motion to direct staff to start looking at this stuff?
For on which end? Recreational or medical?
Medical.
Well, you can do that. Do you want to also, do you or are you prepared to? Because if you're not, that's fine. As I told the mayor, as far as recreational, if you don't make a decision tonight, that's fine as far as opting out or moving forward. But the, I would like a decision sooner rather than later. We don't want to be caught with the state who there and we're behind the game. So, you know, I don't know if you want to act on the, the issue of whether we opt out or not of recreational. If you don't want to do that tonight, fine, you can still go over and direct staff to work on the medical aspect.
It sounded to me, and I don't want to speak for anyone on the council, but it sounded like that opting out at this time was the direction. That we wanted to head until the, until the rules were clarified at the very least, in my opinion. And again, you know, I don't want to speak for you, but, you know, I would put that motion up there to move that we opt out of recreational marijuana.
Now, the one thing I don't know if, if, there, there have been examples, samples of actual ordinances where they opt out. I'm wondering if it would, if it would be better if we look at those. Bill should have some from that, from that law firm as an example to see whether we should do it as an ordinance. And properly do it rather than just voting and saying we're opting out.
Recommended by the MML to do it as an ordinance.
Or as an ordinance. So that would mean we go through.
If we direct the staff to look into.
Yeah, we'll work with Bill, draft the ordinance, then we go through first and second reading. And, and adopt it that way, not just do it as a motion.
I, I think that's the prudent thing to do because this is the first meeting that we've discussed this and it, it could.
It allows.
It could allow for, for more of a public opinion. Rather than just opting out tonight and then everybody wakes up in the morning and reads a paper and says, oh, I didn't know you were doing that. So let's, let's direct staff to, if you will, amend your motion to.
Prepare an ordinance.
Direct our legal counsel to prepare a, an opt-out ordinance.
So moved. Yes, I would, I would make the motion that it directs the staff to, you know, provide an ordinance for opting out of, opting out of marijuana.
Recreation.
Recreation marijuana, it's always the same medical problem either.
Facilities, correct?
Yes.
Facilities.
Okay, so just to reiterate, your motion is to direct staff to provide an ordinance.
Prepare.
Prepare.
Prepare an ordinance.
Is that what you do?
Yep, prepare. An ordinance to opt out of recreational marijuana facilities.
Facility.
Facility. All right, that is correct.
Second.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
And Walgra? Motion carried.
And I'd like to at least, as far as the recreational goes, I would, I would like to at least have the planning commission. Research the areas that are, are zoned or. Did I say recreational?
Recreation. Sorry. I know, I've done it twice, so I still do it.
Redo it.
Yeah. For the, for the, for the locations that are zoned or with very little adjustment for, or appropriate for the five different.
And I guess a question would be of, at least me, and I think it would help the commission, we can do it one of two ways. You are allowed to determine which of those you want to, you could say no provisional, provisioning centers. Or you can say how many of each and which ones you want to exclude. Do you want to give us the numbers to work with and see how they fit? Or do you want us to prepare and then make our, our recommendations? Do you wanna give us the numbers to work with and see how they fit, or do you want us to prepare and then make our, our recommendation to you, and you can modify it any way you want?
I would, I guess this, and I don't know, I would just, I'm assuming that the, that the planning commission, and you guys have been on the planning commission, assuming that the planning commission may have a better grasp on the city and the zones in the city as to not necessarily recommend, but maybe even possibly recommend. 'Cause we can look, I can look at that gray area, and I'd say, yeah, let's put six of them up, but, you know, it might be.
Yeah, and ultimately, as far as the numbers go, it's not something, I mean, that they've generally regulated, they don't have the ability to regulate specific numbers in specific industries very often.
Who doesn't?
The planning commission, they, for this, it can, but other industries, they have not traditionally done it, now they can look, we're located in a land use and look at protected uses and say, okay, roughly, you know, if we wanna keep them away from parks and churches, this was, this is what it would look like, or something along those lines. And then, but as far as how many, I mean, we can look at comparable things, like, like how many active liquor stores we have, along those lines. I don't, we can give you that information.
'Cause ultimately, it's really a decision of how many is something you want, it may be that, yes, we could fit six, eight, ten, twelve of these in an area. Or do what one community did in the UP, that said, this was for medical, for every use, the number of facilities allowed is unlimited. And that's what they used as, as their wording, there is no limit, if you can squeeze it in, you know, it will be considered. Now, you may say, we only want one grow facility, for whatever reason, then that's fine, even though you could fit a lot more, it may be what you want. You may want five, whatever, it's really almost beyond what the zoning allows, 'cause the zoning could allow maybe a large number of something. It's a question, do you want that many within the community? And that's where ultimately, you're gonna have to make that decision on, on what it is you want in that ordinance, in terms of the number of each kind of facility. There may be some, you want none for some reason. And, well, as an example, Manastee, said they're allowing everyone, and I don't know what the numbers were, I can't remember, but they said, no provisioning centers in their city. They looked at them as the ones, I guess, most likely to create problems, so they allowed everything else. So it just varies for community to community of what you want.
I think it's, it sounds like it's more informational for council to just kind of review, and, and I don't know if anyone on, on the council is ready to restrict anything for any of that, so. I mean, if we need, if we need numbers, and, you know, we can maybe direct the staff to look into one of each, you know, the facilities we're growing, you know, I don't know, I lost it.
Processing, transport.
One of each of the facilities allowed with the medical marijuana.
And, and certainly, we could tell by what you do with the mapping to say, here's how many who would, if you wanna fill them all in, and put as many as you can, we could put this many of this in the city. Of grow, of grow centers, processing centers, grow facilities, whatever.
You know, if nothing else.
And then you, we have to decide, okay, what do we actually wanna allow?
Yeah, I think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Right, I think the idea of, like, some of the industrial areas, maybe, it doesn't compare to a liquor store, talking about whether it compares to other manufacturing, like, what's the average size of a grow center? Well, it would make sense for capacity, maybe there's why we're for three, so we'd say we want it for five, I guess, I think about that. And I think if we're looking at, for medicinal, I think, I would like to, once the rules are established for recreational, that it could very well come back on the table later time. You know, instead of making, deciding to opt-in, so if you're all looking at it, it may make sense, at the same time to, kind of, both.
Yeah, as far as locations are concerned, you're gonna be dealing, if you, between medical and recreational, I suspect that whatever zoning rules you put are gonna be very similar for both. That being said, in fact, they can co-locate, uh, by, under the law. I also think that the main zoning, any potential zoning issues are gonna be mainly in the provisioning center area, that's just one that has come up everywhere else. Grow center is, yes, maybe, regarding odor, but again, it's pretty, it's limited, it's dive zone, there's not a lot of tech use in the, in the industrial district. So, but that being said, we'll, or the, we'll bring back to you guys, and we'll see what goes.
And everybody's, you guys okay with that?
Okay.
If, if, if nothing else, like, so it's, it's education for any, for us, for any future council, whatever, we'll have the information, and, and I know myself and, and all of you, from what I've heard, you're all looking for information, so, there's nothing wrong with that.
Because one thing that, you look at that nice big I-two area, and you say, boy, that could handle a lot, you also gotta realize, a big chunk of that is a hole in the ground, a quarry. Other parts of it, there are contamination, there are a variety of issues that may limit what you can do on it. So those are all restrictions, there's not as much land as what you want, and of course, some of it's already occupied. Apart from DPI and those types of things.
That's what I was saying.
But, but there's also that big hole in the ground that it just doesn't show up on that map, but it's there.
Okay, thank you, Adam, we appreciate it.
The planning commission will look at that, we'll get to something in the future.
Okay. And I think we close that one out. Down to new, new business is the hot mixed asphalt patching program contract renewal recommendation.
Is this gonna be as interesting as the other?
Simple. In December, the city received the attached request from Everett Beverage Trucking to renew the HMA hot mixed asphalt patching program contract for 2019. This contract provides continuous patching, asphalt services to the city as needed, the costs bill to the appropriate line item where the work's performed. This contract contains language for up to one additional one-year period, providing both parties a creative pricing. Bruce Goodrich of Everett Beverage Trucking has requested an increase in a few of the contract unit prices to offset an increase in materials costs. However, many of the items and services remain at the same cost as last year. And if you scroll down, we do, do a comparison of the proposed 2019 prices to the 2018 prices. Probably the one that jumps out at the most is there's a forty-seven percent increase in the zero to one-ton patch prices. Those are, those are costly to do, I mean, he's gotta bring the same equipment, the same roller, do all the prep work, and he's only gonna get paid for a ton of asphalt, so he's gotta spread all those costs over, over that area. And likewise, you see, when you get to the one to three, there's a nineteen percent increase, still a pretty good increase, but, you know, he, he's, he's got limited amount of money that he can recoup all those fixed costs that he has. Using last year's quantities, and Shannon went through, she looked at what we, how many tons of various line items that we used, and based on last year's quantities, the proposed changes would show a net increase in our payment to Goodrich of one thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. The 2019 unit prices are all aligned with the attached unit patching first. As by our recommendation, the city engineer, the city council approved the rule of the 2018 HMA patching program contract for 2019 with Everett Beverage Trucking corporate for unit prices proposed. And Bruce did send a letter that we did attach, I think it's a pre, one of the last meetings, I mentioned that we'd seen that increase in aggregate, he references that in there as well. He saw that last spring, so he's just now, he doesn't care, he'll pass it on.
Rich, is there any other companies in the community or around here that provide this type of service, or would you be capable of doing something like that? It's a type of, what I understand is very scarce.
There's that, Bolins does operate a plant out on M thirty-two by Manny Hill, but they're not in operation all the time. So it would be, basically, we would have to, I mean, if they were, if they wanted to bid on it, which they haven't bid typically in the past, we would be at the mercy of whenever they came into town and fired up that plant, which is when they have another, we don't want to end up, or, um, they'd fire up that plant, so, you know, we, we could have twenty batches waiting here, or two months, waiting for them to fire out. So, no, there was two asphalt companies in town, the one went out of business because of health issues, and Bruce ended up buying out most of his equipment and, and hired a lot of his employees, but he is basically the only show in town.
I move we approve the renewal of the 2018 HMA patching program for 2019 with Everett Beverage to the unit prices proposed.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Did you say Nielsen?
Yes. Noak?
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Rich. Next up is a long-distance transfer ambulance remount.
You have my memo, so I'll be brief, we have two mobile intensive care units, one we bought in 2017 and are working pretty much around the clock, about, almost five thousand miles a month, trying to keep up with moving particularly old patients out of Alpine Unit to other hospitals elsewhere. Our first unit that we bought in 2011, when we started the NICU program, has been the secondary or backup unit, and is used for ALS, noncritical while business transfers. We've, it's had a long assorted story, we call it Frankenlens, because when its six-point-oh engine died, Ross, I'm amazed that he could do this, but he actually put an engine that should never have fit in that rig, in that rig, out of the ninety-nine, no less. So it's had, it's had its nine lives already, it's now definitely need to fix it. What we're proposing to do is to remount the modular box, the aluminum box on the back of the ambulance, onto a new Ford chassis, but it has to be done in cooperation with the OEM manufacturer, you have to have several different certifications to do that, which makes it sole source. The good news is that instead of two hundred grand for a new ambulance, we're looking at eighty grand to fix the old one. Where do we get the eighty grand? We get it from the DPW construction fund in a short-term loan, so we're borrowing money from another entity of the city to pay for the cost. There's no penalty for early payoff, and we will probably be paying it off early, the longest loan, Trump, would be four years. But we, there you go. But we really need to get this thing done, and we're asking for your approval tonight.
Can you pay it back at three then, 'cause we've always got twelve.
Yeah, the, yeah, we've done this before with the equipment fund, in fact, we've bought, we got two ambu, the two ambulances we have now, the eleven and the sixteen, came out of there. We don't wanna take out of the equipment fund again, there are other needs, especially out of DPW for that. We're not really tapping into the DPW facility money, which was left over from the bond when the building was built, just like we did with public safety. And that is restricted the use to the DPW, so if you approve this, what we'd be ask is a waiver of that restriction. The money is not coming out in, you know, being removed, it is coming out, but it will, will be repaid, the interest, I believe, is four percent. Thereabouts four or five, whatever we've done with the other ones. And then hopefully, no more than four years, because quite frankly, these things wear out in about four years, and that's a problem we have with the eleven, we're still paying on it, and it's basically dead. And so we are gonna pay off one of those this coming year, I think, and the other one the year after. So we are getting rid of those payments, so we'd like to have the, we take it out of this fund, and then we'll repay it with interest, and if we can pay it off in two years, that's what we'll do.
And our ability to pay it off is due to a increase in long-distance transfer revenue, because of the spike in volume out of admission. We're doing more than we did before, there's more revenue than we had projected.
You know, again, this is just a compliment to you, chief, and certainly to the rest of the staff, 'cause we all have witnessed this across the departments here, where there's always, you know, innovative ways that basically you can continue to stretch our, our dollars and, and keep providing the high-level service that our citizens have, so. That's just a personal, I really appreciate this, so. I have no questions. Thank you, chief, for the creativity, and obviously the DPW or whoever.
Thank you, Rich, for that.
I guess just a, a question I'm sure you've already answered, but just for our sake and, and the general public, that what, what if anything will suffer from the DPW construction fund being eighty thousand dollars less for the next several years?
Couple years.
Yeah, ba, basically, there's.
Two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and.
Two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. What, and what we did, council was, at the time, set that aside and restricted it to be used for future upgrade, upgrades and maintenance to the DPW facility. We've got into it a couple times, very limited, but right now, because the building is twelve years old, you know, we're, we're still in, very cheap, we're not using that money. So it is available.
Okay.
No, Greg said four percent, I want ten.
I don't know, whatever it was.
You gotta fire it, it's gotta be a fire. So it, you know, there's really good, you know, impact.
That'll be up to her.
Okay.
You're gonna tell us what to answer.
Thank you, sir.
So do you need two motions, one to lift the restriction?
Well, or, I don't know if it can be combined, just say, we lift the restriction and then approve the law, the loan of the money. Add a way to be determined consistent with other internal borrow, borrowing that we've done.
That's my motion.
Got that, 'cause I don't remember what I said.
I'll go back and listen to it.
I don't remember it.
Was there a second on that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.